We have none. Citizen comment on agenda-related items. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on tonight's agenda? We now will move on to the consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda, considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval minutes, approval payroll, monthly bills, and notification regarding next work session.
I'll make the motion that the council take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cody, supported by Councilmember Zelinski, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, will you please take the roll? Councilmember Cody?
Yes.
Councilmember Zelinski?
Yes.
Mayor Phil Tom Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Gustaf?
Yes.
And Mayor Kenny?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration of options for Lighthouse Playground. The Department of Public Works has been researching existing conditions, options, and costs regarding impacts of the wood preservative used in materials that form Lighthouse Playground. The preservative is chromium copper arsenate and was commonly used for more than seventy years until 2001. While the MDEQ and the EPA only regulate arsenic levels in the soil, high concentrations of CCA have been found in the wood structure, chips, and soils at Lighthouse Park. Options included removing the playground, capping or removing the soil, and capping the soil maintaining the existing structure. At this time, council can take action to direct staff to continue to research additional information.
We have a presentation if you would like.
Do we need to have a motion to discuss this? Okay.
Good evening. This summer, we began to notice lots of reports of playgrounds throughout northern Michigan, and for that matter throughout Michigan, that were closing their playgrounds due to concerns with arsenic contamination. So, we began researching it and identified that our playground was built about twenty years ago, which would have been in the timeframe that chromium copper arsenate was used in preserving wood. And that playground is primarily a wood structure. So, we met with T, our brownfield consultant. He recommended that we sample portions of the playground structure itself, the wood chips that are underneath it, as well as the soil that's below the playground. We waited until we got preliminary test results back, and it showed very high concentrations of CCA in the wood structure. Now, that's not a bad thing. That was put there on purpose, and it's put there in order to prevent bacterial fungus and insects from deteriorating that wood. I mean, that's why it was used. The test also indicated in several locations that the wood chips contained the arsenic, and then also in certain locations, the soil containing the arsenic. Further research determined that the DEQ does not regulate exposure limits within the wood structure itself, nor does it have any regulations on the wood chips, but it does have exposure limits in soils. So, T contacted representatives from the EPA and also from the DEQ. They were not really able to provide any further guidance on what to do with the playground structure. So, until we could get more information, we decided to close that down, and we performed some additional testing. The concentration levels that are in the soil are high enough where it is considered a contaminated site from the DEQ guidelines. And so, something has to be taken to limit exposure to the public. And the two options are really to remove it so that it doesn't exist anymore, or place some sort of a barrier between the soils and the public. What we've talked about internally is, and I provided some just general pricing, removal is very expensive, and we don't have the asset any longer. One way that we could place a barrier between the public and the soils would be to remove all the wood chips that are there, put a woven fabric down so that there's physically a barrier, and then put new wood chips on top. All the information that we've been able to glean from a 2008 EPA study says that exposure, if you're playing on a playground or touching that wood, is no different than if you're on your deck at home, and your deck was built before 2001 and used CCA as a preservative. What it does recommend is that staining of the wood can help the CCA stain within the wood, or help the arsenic stain within the wood, and reduce it from leaching into the wood chips and the ground. It also recommends that people wash their hands once they've come in contact with wood, and this is any wood that's treated with CCA. But it does not have any recommendations or overlying statements of that it should be removed. So, there's some different options out there. Obviously, removal because you'd have to dispose of it. Any licensed landfill is a very expensive option. And we're not here making a specific recommendation, just kind of giving you some general information of what we found, some of the pricing. If we decided to keep the playground, we would have to still deal with that contaminated soil, but we think that it could be done in place. We've talked about some signage so that we can have some educational component to the public. And we've also got that in the third round of additional testing that we did yesterday. And T hasn't gone through it in detail, but basically summarized it that the arsenic is in the top eighteen inches of the soil, and that structure's been there for twenty years. And since it was built, you could assume that arsenic has been leaching out of that wood at a slow rate, but it's kept in the top portions of the soil. So, we don't have any threats to the groundwater, and likely don't have any long-term monitoring or wells that have to be done. But we're gonna have to go through and put together a response plan that will have to be approved by the DEQ.
When you say staining the wood, what kind of stain do you mean? You mean like an Olympic overcoat? Or are you talking about an oil-based stain to go over it?
Oil-based sealing.
Yeah, an oil-based sealing.
Oil-based.
Point of clarification, Jeff. I don't know the correct terminology, but you're saying that the playground itself was treated with CCA, which is arsenate. And what's the difference between arsenate and arsenic? And, because you mentioned arsenic several times, is it arsenate that's in the ground, or arsenic that's in the ground? Or am I asking a question that we don't have the answers to yet?
I would defer to Mr. Cody.
It's been a long time, but I think arsenate means there's three parts. In other words, when you do the chemical formula, there's three parts of arsenate. I believe that's what it is. And I bet you, I can't, I don't know. But that's what I, that's...
I don't prefer Mr. Cody.
Makes it so much clearer, I guess.
Well, you know, like what is it? Each two, there's two parts of arsenate.
Let me give you, arsenic is three parts, you know?
In the materials that we provided in your council packet, it talks about the chromium. And the chromium, there were some tests that found that there was chromium that had leached out. But specifically, the DEQ guidelines talks about the hexavalent chromium, which is one of the chromium molecules that can be hazardous. We didn't have any of those present. So, I'm not a chemistry expert, but my belief is that the arsenate that is used to treat the wood has several different components of that same family, and the one that is regulated by the DEQ is the arsenate. And that was what was tested for.
So, when it leaches, it leaches out and goes back to its natural state of arsenic then? Is that what we're saying, some of that?
I'm not qualified in such a...
Again, I don't know. See, just wanted to clarify that. I don't, if it's arsenic that's in the soil and the tree, obviously this... I don't know the difference between the two, so I was trying to understand that better.
I have a question. Is it time to ask? Are you done, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Yeah, absolutely.
Did we contact the Health Department? The Health Department weigh in on this at all?
We have not contacted the Health Department.
I talked with Mr. Matthew Fornier, I believe is how you say it, was the environmental health coordinator for the Health Department. He is familiar and has some background in this, and would be more than willing to look at our numbers, our test results, and come and give us a presentation on what he thinks about this.
That's one of the purposes of bringing it to you this evening. I know what other types of information you'd like, and whether you want an opportunity for the public to weigh in by establishing a public hearing.
Jeff, I have a question or two. You said there is contamination eighteen inches down, or we'd have to take eighteen inches off of the soil? Would that cause any structure problems once you remove that much soil?
If we remove the soil, you would have to remove the structure in order to do that. But if we left that in place, we could put a physical barrier over the top of the soil that would allow the soil to remain, allow the structure to remain, and prevent any contact from the public from touching that soil.
Okay. And then the wood chips, what kind of wood chips would you use? Or would you use tear chips?
The chips that are in there today are, we're going in by PCA. You know, I think we replaced those about three years ago. The chips that we priced out and the numbers that I gave you are actually similar to the stuff that's in the new Rocket Playground. It's more of an engineered mulch. It has more impact resistance for children, and it combines with the playgrounds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Well, I thank you for the kind of the history and the summation of that. I, you know, I would recommend that we continue the research, and if at all, I'd like to be able to save that structure. I don't think taking it away is the right way to answer, but if we could find a safe way with signage and some other options, I'd like to pursue that research and discussion.
If I may, the signage that we've talked about is similar to what you may have seen in other areas, and that's that California considers this a health hazard. Nobody else does, but California does, and maybe I should be concerned, maybe not. But that's what we've talked about with the signage.
Everything that we've done to date is really for precautionary measures.
Sure. No, and I thought maybe we were referring to people, you know, wash their hands, post whatever, stuff like that. But again, I would recommend it, and I do think it's helpful to have an open forum and have the public weigh in. As the Rocket Park is part of, you know, my history, that park has a lot of youth in this community, and I would love to have their input and their feedback.
The park itself is about twenty years old. Three years ago, we went through, we replaced a lot of the hose covers, a lot of the chains. There's pieces of wood that have to be fixed and repaired every year, but that's kind of normal maintenance. But there's probably still another fifteen years' life potentially in that playground.
That was a community bill, too.
And one other point on the staining, what we've learned through this process is that if you have wood that is exposed or was treated with CCA, the EPA does not recommend power washing it before you do the staining. Power washing opens up the surface, it opens up the pores of the wood, and can actually lead to additional leaching of the arsenic. So, if the staining were to proceed, you know, in the future, if that's the direction that we go, it would likely be contracted out and would just be applied on a semi-annual basis.
Mr. McCullough, I'm hoping that you can help me. I know you've done a lot of research, and I appreciate all the studying you've done. I'm having trouble finding information that says tear it out. Everything I read, they recommend you don't tear it out. And they also talk about anything that's twenty years old or over ten years old, that a lot of that leaching has already taken place. And that, as the years go by, it just becomes less and less of a problem.
Yeah, that's likely the case. We do know that the wood chips were replaced three years ago.
Yes, sir.
And we have wood chips that, in several locations, that exceeded what the normal ground contamination limits would be from the DEQ. They don't really regulate the wood chips, so that was just kind of a comparison, and I think you've got some of those numbers in your packet.
Yes, sir. And that could have been coming from the soil underneath, too, as well as the leaching from the structure, right?
Well, it's moved by the water molecules, the same account, so...
Okay. If I remember correctly, when you put that in there, didn't you put a plastic down? Isn't there plastic in there?
There's not plastic, but there is landscaping fabric that's underneath most of the wood.
And that wouldn't hold up? It would still go through that, maybe?
Maybe it did, maybe it didn't. I don't know that. But we've tested both above it and below it.
Jeff, the research that I've done is that what is regulated is water. Apple juice, State of California has filed class action suit against wine producers and such because of the level of arsenic in some of the lower-cost wines and stuff. But the most common effects that you get from arsenic are from physically ingesting hand-to-mouth or water and such as that. The FDA standards are ten parts per billion in apple juice, and they actually recommend that parents don't give apple juice or other juices to children under five because of development during that period of time, and limit their intake. But it shows that China has stopped imports of American rice because of arsenic above a hundred and fifty parts per billion in rice. Rice, shellfish, and other leafy vegetables do absorb the arsenic during the growing process and are available. One site indicates that the typical diet has twelve to fifty MCG of arsenic every day, and it's about the twentieth most common element on the earth. The big issues that I've seen with arsenic come from groundwater, and I'm sure ours is treated and monitored for that. And they don't really get concerned about it until it's about fifty parts per billion per liter internationally. So, I would concur. I think it would be kind of a quick reaction to destroy a wonderful playground that we've got. There's gotta be some rather inexpensive and easy maintenance things that we can do to preserve it. I'm also aware, because I've got some friends that live at Lighthouse Landing, that people are still using the park, even though there's barriers up and signs. So, George, what sort of legal liability do you think the city would have?
Well, I think that the city has done what it can to stop people from using the park at this time. And if people are walking around a barrier and using it, I think there's certainly some assumption of risk on their part. And overall, I think in this case, the government and communities certainly have a liability standpoint to protect the city.
And signage moving forward will continue to help mitigate any of that liability?
I guess the only reason that the tear-out option is on the table is that is how some other communities have responded to it. And you need to be aware of that.
Didn't Traverse City take one out this spring, Lake Grand Rapids?
No. Some of them that have responded have actually compounded the problem, because one of the things that the EPA recommends you don't do is burn the wood, because that puts the ash in there, and it's more readily ingested in an ash form than it is in its natural form.
The 2008 EPA study, and I missed that question from Councilman Zelinski, but the EPA study flat-out states that it does not recommend overall removal and tear-out of these. But then it recommends several steps for precautionary measures to protect it from staining, and then some maintenance activities such as don't power wash it, don't burn it, don't sand it, don't saw it. If there's a bad piece of wood, remove it, replace it with a different one.
Kind of a side note, it just opens up a can of worms, like our boardwalk.
Correct.
I mean, wherever we look, we see treated, the treated material. I can sit there in my mind, see the parents sitting on the bench, and the kids playing around on the boardwalk. I mean, it's all...
Yeah, and if you, I mean, if you just look up communities in northern Michigan that are dealing with that, a lot of them have closed their parks, and I haven't seen a lot of conclusion to it.
Some are waiting, perhaps.
I think another aspect to that is while the FDA sets a ten parts per billion in apple juice and drinking water limit, I also found that a lethal dose of ingested arsenic is seventy thousand parts per billion. So, it's a very, very conservative standard. And even the test results that were shown in the package, while they might exceed some of the standards, they're well below anything that's considered a health hazard.
Right. And to your point earlier, arsenic in the groundwater in Michigan is pretty common, but we tested for it in Manassas.
Well, it sounds like council is on board with saving that Lighthouse Park and proceeding with, trying to see what we can do to mitigate any contaminations. So, what else do you need from council?
If you would like to set a date for public input, you could do that. Or we'll just continue the additional research with the Health Department and bring back inform.
Yeah, we can do that concurrently. Do that. I would go ahead and get some more information, and we can also set a public hearing on that.
I'm under assumption you're gonna get the information before the public hearing, right? We can do that, because that way you got factual information, stuff like that.
And I'll ask T to be here to ask the chemistry test questions.
Sorry for stopping you, Jeff.
Do you wanna, I mean, the park is obviously closed now that we're approaching winter. Do, we can wait till January, February to...
Well, obviously, until we collect the information we need and we feel like we've got a good presentation of, yeah, I would agree that, you know. I'd rather not rush it and not have accurate information, and give the opportunity for the public to be, to be, I mean... So, yeah, if we push it out until January, that's...
Unless you need something before that.
No, we really don't, and it's effectively closed until spring, so...
But for planning purposes, for budgets and stuff, if we need to start including some of that?
Yeah, planning in January.
Yeah, there is, I mean, there is some impact on if we keep it in order to install the fabric, remove the wood chips, buy new wood chips, staining it this first year, so there's gonna be some budget impacts.
And it's ongoing maintenance for it as well, right, to continue to do that?
The recommendation would be to stain it every two years.
Yeah. And then would they change out the chips every couple of years, too, as well?
I would not expect to have to change those out. If you, if you're reducing the amount, if you're sealing it and you're keeping it from leaching out, then it should reduce that. It could be tested on some sort of interval, every five years, ten years, something like that.
I think as Councilman Zelinski pointed out, you know, with the age of the structure now, most of the exterior leaching has already occurred. Most of what's left in it is towards the core of the wood that we've got, so...
Well, the tests that we performed on the wood itself were right at the edges, that they're up at the wear edges. So, the wood is still preserved, and the concentrations are high like they should be.
If we have, you estimate fifteen years left, so maybe test it every five years.
Yeah, let the research help us to determine those?
Yeah, let's get some facts first, get the full story.
Because there's two different points of view. Some of what I've read, they say do nothing, not even seal it. It's not a problem, and then you read someone does. So, it'd be interesting to get some more facts, maybe get from the Health Department and see what their take is on it.
There is no environmental agency, well, I guess the EPA does recommend sealing it, but the DEQ does not say anything.
But I guess from a liability standpoint, if we take every precaution that we know that we should be taking, that would only help us. Is there any other comments or questions? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to notices, communications, and announcements. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. Tonight, we'll hear from the Alliance for Economic Success and Tamara.
Just for clarification, do we need to do a formal resolution and make a motion?
Do you sufficient or...
Okay. I just wanna make sure if we did...
Thanks.
Just wanna make sure.
Sorry. Go ahead.
I'm Betsy Evans. I'm the Director of Business Development. Tamara is unable to be here. She may be joining shortly. I did create a PowerPoint presentation, and I don't know if that's, we'll turn online, or I think you all have it in your packages as well. The management is over here, but again, just to start off with the staff and the board, I show that the staff or pre-missions are Business Development, Community Development, and Resource Development. And so, I serve in the leg of the stool as the Business Development. Tamara Lozmenka is the Community Development. Tim Urban, Resource Development. And Susan Hornpool, thankfully, is there to hold us all together and do the grand administration. And it also shows our board, listed there as well, Beth McCarthy, Bob Wittenbichler, Alan Marshall, Bert Marsh, James Parker, Kelly Smith, Eric Ustod. Manastee Manufacturing Council has three representatives, so they share. Attending the meetings, Scott Ward from West Shore Community College, Sarah Alden, and Tom St. Downs make up our board. Just a few of the highlights of what we've done throughout the county since the beginning of the year. Tamara has been working feverishly with Rob Carson and the Planning Department of updating the recreation plan for the entire county, as well as for each individual municipality. Some of the major themes that have come out of that are the land and water trails, access to water in particular, and collaborative efforts at defining some different projects that could be implemented to go along with all the ideas that have come out of the recreation planning. We have kicked off the manufacturing strategy and are seeking a consultant to help us with this at this time, and forming a leadership team of various manufacturers and representatives from all the sectors of industry and academia. Still working with Portage Point Inn, working with SBDC. Baker College has two classes actually around development and helping the Portage Point Inn build a business plan and some of their human resources. Ironfish Distillery is a distillery that's gonna be opening up in Springdale Township in 2016. They had their groundbreaking earlier this month. We, the Lakes to Land, was part of the, doing a farm and food strategy, and they were awarded a Michigan Association of Planning Award for Excellence. Just wanted to highlight that. The Alliance has formed a partnership with Venture North, which is the capital access arm of Travers Bay EDC, or what was formerly the Travers Bay EDC. They have some different funding opportunities that are flexible in their terms and are available for businesses and municipalities now in Manassas County. So, we have sort of kicked off a partnership with them, and so that could be a tool in our toolbox that I can offer to businesses that are looking for perhaps some alternative forms of funding. I want to note that they are in no way trying to compete with the local banks or the banking industry, but they're more of a gap financing to fill a gap in collateral or in equity, or if traditional lending is just not available. Again, we had a meeting with Private Foundations of Michigan. They met up in Manassas County. We actually went to the Portage Point Inn. It was a great meeting, and a lot of the private foundations left very excited with a lot of the activities that were taking place in Manassas County and a lot of the initiatives that they are going. So, I can see them as a future source of funding. Again, excited about the collaboration and things that are taking place. They're kicking off a little Manassas River Watershed Plan. We're working on a US 31 corridor plan. Again, that is with the Planning Department and Rob Carson to go from one end of the county to the other to look at our US 31 corridor and to do some planning for development and what we want the commercial corridor to look like. Also, there's been more sewer development, the Manassas Township, Byler Township. Onecoma Township is looking at different sewer options as well as Arcadia. We've been a part of trying to help them either find funds or the best way to do that. And also, working with the Village of Bear Lake. They're trying to devise... Village of Bear Lake. They're trying to devise a community strategy, looking at what their business district looks like and what that US 31 corridor could look like. As we all know, there are some lighted buildings that need to be addressed and are really a safety hazard. So, we've been working with them to find out, number one, the best way to deal with it, and, and to get some funding to take care of that. Also, more watershed planning in Arcadia. We have another Explore the Shores site. We've submitted a grant application on the Lower Manistee River. Part of, we had a meeting of the folks that deal with access and universal design, and it was very interesting. We took them to a lot of the Explore the Shores sites and a lot of our facilities that are handicap accessible and ADA accessible. And it was interesting to note that even though we met all the standards, the minimum standards, that they had some other ideas of ways to improve that and to make it more user-friendly. So, actually, we're, we're looking at getting some funding to look at, to hire an engineering firm that actually addresses not just the minimum ADA standards, but what, what else should we do to make all of our sites universally accessible. We've been a part of working on the collaborative recycling strategy, working on a public-private venture to address recycling in Manistee. The Launch Manistee Partnership has been incredible, the Cradle to Career initiative is taking place. And in particular, they have been three different activities. One is dealing with preschool, and they have the K through 12 education. And we've been working particularly in the assessment of the workforce and the training, and talking with West Shore Community College, different businesses, different manufacturers, Baker College, to find out what training opportunities they offer and where the gaps are to fill the skilled trades, occupational gaps that we have. We've also facilitated strategic plans for Blacker Airport, the Manistee County Library is just about done, the Council on Aging, and also the Conservation District. We're also now a partner with the Human Services Collaborative at Manistee. So, that's, we've been doing all these things. This is, this is more directly related to the city, and I tried to align them with your strategies that you had developed in the last strategic plan, which was in 2014. So, pertaining to the development-ready strategy, we are working on the US 31 corridor development and making that development ready. Again, trying to prepare for future development that I think is going to come into the city and our county, and, and really look at the corridor and making sure that we're ready for development to come in. Looking at our industrial parks and trying to maximize their occupancy, that is a primary goal of the manufacturing strategy. We're going to identify, not only do an asset inventory of what are the assets that we have in Manistee County and our city, as far as workforce, natural resources, infrastructure, and, and the different assets that we have, and marry them with potential manufacturers that would like to come to our area. So, hopefully, you know, the, the end result of that is filling those Manistee industrial parks. The development of the port strategy, we have not begun yet. We were trying to kick off the manufacturing strategy, get that going, get a better understanding of that before we will seek our, some assistance from National Oceanic Administration. We have been in talks with them, and then so hopefully we'll start that in 2016. One of your other goals was linking education and training needs of businesses with the school programming. And again, we're utilizing the, the project team through Launch Manistee and serve on those project leadership teams. Again, taking an inventory of all the programs that businesses offer, industry, what is available through our West Shore and through Baker College, and also looking at K through 12, the career tech centers, and what is in the curriculum in the K through 12 system that is preparing our workforce. As far as business support within the city, we serve on the DDA Economic Restructuring Committee. I already mentioned Venture North and our different funding opportunities that, that are now available to us with our partnership with them. We've been working with folks with the Iron Works Building and getting that repurposed and, and a meaningful business again for the downtown. And also, the Voe, they're working to refinance the debt with the USDA for longer term and lower interest rate, and also beginning some strategic planning going forward. We're still working with the Ramsdale Theater. Johnson and Johnson Consulting out of Chicago has been helping us with that endeavor. They're about eighty percent complete, and hopefully you saw just recently, we sent out a press release. They're looking for more public involvement and input into different programming and different ideas for the Ramsdale Theater. One of your other goals was improving your recreational areas. And so, with the completion of the city rep plan, I think that will further define and, and enhance what the goals that you had already listed in your strategic plan, to find out where we need to prioritize and to seek funding to improve those recreational areas. And then, I know another goal was to identify financial options for infrastructure, and Tim has a meeting scheduled with Federal Economic Development Association to address some of those needs and opportunities. So, our, our future plans, I think first on the dock of the city strategic plan has sort of been put on hold, and we were kind of waiting for some dust to settle. And, and so whenever you are ready to initiate that and to, and to kick that off, we'd be more than happy to, to have that conversation and to do that strategic planning, because I think it's, it's quite an asset, Manistee County and Manistee City. I think it's, it's great that you do those regular strategic plans and really stay focused on your direction. We are also developing our economic and community development dashboards, not only for AES, but as a, a benchmark for are we making progress, is, can we see some real economic development numbers and some community development numbers. So, developing that dashboard so we can, can see where we're, where we have progress. We've been talking about starting a housing strategy with Networks Northwest has, is interested in doing a regional housing strategy, but again, having a housing strategy unique to the city of Manistee and the county. And then we also have several grant applications in the works, one to seek some additional funding for the manufacturing strategy, in updating master plans for communities that are still working on that, for the recreational improvements within the city, for the infrastructure, and to address housing. And then the last piece is just more to start our methods and just to highlight, again, that we, we base our work plan and what we do on the issues and needs of the community that have been, have been brought to us. We strategize and form plans around that. We develop the resources to address those, those projects and initiatives. We reevaluate and update our strategies and, and keep going. So, again, it's, it's really, it's, it's very helpful for us to have you, with you doing your strategic planning and providing us with that direction and focus to make sure that we are going down the right road that, that we need to be doing to, to be serving you, so.
I have a question. I'd like to say I'm really excited to see that you have that US 31, that you're looking at that, the whole corridor, because I do think that Manistee attracts people because of the way we look and feel, and how to implement the growth and yet maintain that look and feel, I think is important. And so, looking at the whole from north to south, I think is a really good idea.
Agreed. And, and actually, I had an interesting conversation today about a consultant who's worked on manufacturing strategies and saying that, you know, we're all excited about this manufacturing strategy and what kind of partner, but he said, it's, it's not so much the same approach where here are your, your assets, here are your natural resources, here are your infrastructure, let's bring in a cheese manufacturer, that really, industries are really looking to cite more on quality of life and access to natural resources and the community. And so, it has to be an important component when you, when you talk about community and economic development, to not just focus on one particular strategy, and I, I believe the US 31 corridor could, could really take off.
I just have a quick question. I'd like to thank you for all that you do, first of all. And on the Ramsdale Theater, eighty percent done. I believe I read someplace their, the goal, when do you expect to have it completed? When, when is that?
I think it was, it was hoped, the, the hope was completed by November of this year. And again, I think that they, the consultants felt that they needed some more public input. I know they did a number of interviews and have talked with a number of stakeholders and groups, but I think they wanted more of the, the total community's input into it, to see if there are any other ideas that may have been, been lost. But hopefully, hopefully it'll be wrapped up, I, I would hope, in November.
So, just so I hear, I'll repeat back what I think I heard you say, is that you, they did, they don't feel they got enough input? They don't have enough new ideas?
I don't know that they didn't get enough input. I think they just want to make sure that they have covered all the bases, that they made sure that they've heard from anybody who, who, who may not have had an opportunity, and they just want to make sure that they get as much input as possible.
Thank you.
Question on the Voe Theater and the USDA debt refinancing. Is, is there a timeline on that? Is there...
As far as the term of the, the loan?
Yes.
Or, I have not been directly involved in that. I know that USDA does offer up to a forty-year term, and I'm not sure if that was the, the, the term of this loan or not. I can find out that information and let you know what they're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the information. Next up, we're going to hear from Ms. Krista Johnson, who will report on the activities of the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee.
I'm Krista Johnson. I'm the Chair of the Non-Motorized Transportation Committee. I'm here for my annual report. This year, our committee members were Ken Vick, Blakey Shell, Brian Dedlock, myself, Ed Jones, Todd Miller, Jim Snoyk, and Mark Tomaszewski. Our typical agenda items that we've discussed all year include amenities such as our non-motorized trail park and our bike racks. Our events are typically hammed up, and we included a Ride of Silence this year. We always look for awards. In the past, we've done PAC Awards, which is a promoting active community award, and the Governor's Award. We're always looking at current trends in sports and non-motorized and health. We've looked at implementing ideas from the Training Wheels Program that was hosted here from the city, also city council strategic planning items, and fat tire bikes and Blue Ways, and also trail expansion and connectivity. The non-motorized trail park is a hundred and seventy-acre park out on M-55. This year's biggest improvement is going to be in the access. As you can see, there's a photo there, the freshly paid entry and incurred cuts that we needed to fulfill our M-5 permit. We have in the plans to do an improvement to the parking and to do some beautification as well. Here's a picture that I took yesterday. So, if you guys haven't been out there, that's, there is a two-point-five-mile about loop of walking that wide and paved and pretty smooth, because it's green for skiing every year. And so, that's just a shot of yesterday. Our Hammed Up Event, we narrowed it down to a weekend this year, just to kind of condense, rather than have such a full, full week planned, and try to just really work on a few really good programs. We continue to have our Richard Connectus Memorial Walk and Roll, which occurred downtown. We had a hike and bike, which left from Fifth Avenue Beach, and included both a walking portion and a biking portion. The hiking portion included some pets. We did a children's fun run, and that started at the Voe, where they did a fifteen-minute or so presentation or mini movie on teaching children about calories in and calories out. So, how many calories if they ate a big mass that they would have to burn, and how long it would take to do that. And then it was, about children came outside, and then they ran a, a race, and that is our leader for, for that year. We also hosted a five-train, five-k training program. Normally, we've hosted in the past an actual five-k, and this year we wanted to reach out and kind of get those people who have never ever even tried running. So, one of the participants was Mary Ellen here, and she actually, by the day she ran her race, had lost a hundred and ten pounds.
Wow.
And she did a great job. We also hosted a Ride of Silence. And the Ride of Silence is something that is held in many cities, states, all across the nation, typically in the third week of May. What it represents is you typically would do a ghost bike, which this is our ghost bike for the city now. It's a white painted bike, and it's set out as a tribute to remember those women fallen, basically, bike versus car accidents that resulted in the death of the rider. This is then also used to help educate people and bring awareness. So, the Ride of Silence and the Ghost Bike took place, and the Ghost Bike was placed a few places around the city. This year, I'm very sad to say, because the first year I will not be presenting an award to you. Unfortunately, the Promoting Active Community Award Program has been suspended. And with that, there goes the Governor's Award, which was kind of the award of awards. So, as we stand, Manistee is the most consecutively awarded community for promoting active communities. We've held that title since about the third year, and we're tied as the most. We've worked on connectivity, both in trails, looking at the regional plan that's going on, and also just working with other, other groups to try to bring in a very well, well-rounded, where we're all working to the same goals. We participated in the regional plan. We reviewed the city's and the Harvard Commission's strategic plan, attended Parks Commission meeting involving the regional plan. We've also reviewed the MAPS, Master Facilities Planning Project. In August, we did a cleaning of the house, essentially. We took all our agenda items and went through with a red pen to really narrow down what, what's our best attack for the following year. And so, what we narrowed down to our focus is going to be four areas, and three are, we're in the process of creating a subcommittee over the winter. One of those areas is going to be Safety and Awareness, and we now have a Chair, Ed Jones. The Non-Motorized Trail Park, Ken Vick, Blakey Shell will chair that one. Blue Trails will be chaired by Jim Snoyk. So, in 2016, I know this is my annual report, but we're so excited about what's going to happen for next year, I wanted to tell you a little bit about our direction. So, our Blue Ways group, we're going to look at putting in Blue Ways, so making waterways around the city using what the water features we have. There's already waterways or Blue Ways mapping up all around the Great Lakes. That's how to get around, using like a kayak or something. We'd like to see the zero-entry access available at some of the launch sites, promotion. And we've also included, this will be the first time that we actually enter an item for a capital improvement plan for one of these zero-entry access. On this slide, this shows the, the proposed use of the capital improvement. And on the picture there, you can see what one of those zero-entry racks look like. So, whether you're, have any sort of accessible issues or not, it just makes it much easier to get in and out of a kayak, and then it just slides on down into the water, and you can slide on back, so you don't have to worry about tipping and et cetera. For the Non-Motorized Trail Park, we're looking at long-term sustainability. How can we keep this park going without being so dependent on donations solely? So, maybe kiosk and having people were using it to put in donations there. We're also looking to improve the trailhead and the parking, including the facility and beautification of the area, connecting with the regional plan and existing other non-motorized infrastructure that's close by, and expanding the trail network to include separate fat bike and snowshoe trails. So, if you don't know anything about the fat bikes, they're definitely a very catchy trend that people are really enjoying and getting people back into cycling that haven't been. The problem would be is that the fat bikes really shine in the snow, and where they want to be is where there might be some established trail, such as a snowmobile trail or a groomed cross-country trail. Up at Crystal Mountain, they've been allowing them to use the cross-country trail, and anytime you have mixed users, it's not always the best recipe for success. Either the trail gets harmed, or the users aren't exactly excited to see each other. So, if we can include separate trails, I think that will really make this a standout park, plus we'll extend the snowshoe as well. Connectivity, we want to... Connectivity, we want to continue to participate in the regional plan as well as the area school plans, and we want to continue working with other committees and groups so that we're all working in the same direction to get the most work done. Safety and awareness is going to be very important, and the education through programs would include going into schools, start teaching children about the right of ways, basically at early progress, because those rules apply to cyclists and walkers on the road. I reviewed the laws for cycling with the group, which has some cyclists in it, and with Chief Bachman, and it was amazing how many of us didn't know all the rules. And one of the simple things was texting and driving. We all know that is illegal, but how many times do we see someone on a bike doing that? I actually see it and notice it a lot, but that according to Michigan law is actually against the law. We would also like to do more signing, just bringing more awareness to how they get safer, and working with local law enforcement so that when laws are broken, that they're taken care of on both sides. And that is my presentation for tonight. Thank you. Are there any questions?
I appreciate what that whole committee, what you've done to promote a healthy and active Manistee.
Thank you.
You've done a great, great job.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Concerns and Comments. Citizen comments, this is not a duty for citizens to comment in municipal services. Activities or airs of city involvement, citizen attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments, which are limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. So anyone who'd like to comment? Yes, please come forward and state your name and address.
Jeanne Pelton, 329 First Avenue.
Mary Payne, 531 Broad Avenue.
For those of you who weren't here 20 years ago, Mary and I were the co-chairs of Lighthouse Park. We appreciate the comments today that you want to go forward and you want to investigate this more, and you're not going to take an aggressive behavior that we would be very concerned about. And Mary and I had actually just talked a few months ago, since it was the 20th anniversary of the park, that we wanted to do some kind of celebration or something. So we would definitely like to be included in any going forward, and we have a lot of people that are concerned about Lighthouse Park that are behind us and look forward to a public input. And I think that Lighthouse Park embodied 20 years ago, the true community spirit of Manistee was the most amazing event for some people that they ever participated in, and I still, and I'm sure Mary does still, we have still have people come up to us in the grocery store and everywhere going, when are you going to do something like that again? That was amazing. Well, maybe, maybe we're going to do something like that again. Maybe we'll help the city council and the city of Manistee save Lighthouse Park for our grandchildren and their grandchildren and everyone else. I even found the T-shirt. Yeah, we didn't want to see it go down in the water, and we just talked about, you know, when we built it, you know, we looked at a 20-year plan, and we thought, well, maybe we should look at continuing on, and it just happened to go inside with this. Just happened to go inside of that yellow tape. We probably should have done it last May, but we'll be open, and we're, you know, we haven't given up our community spirit. We're ready to go with whatever helps make this park go forward.
Right, Mary?
Absolutely. We're signing down the dotted line.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
We'll certainly include you in any discussions for public input moving forward. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Mr., please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Dan Skirps. My address is actually 103 East Fifth Street in Northport, so I'm not a Manistee resident. I'm a candidate for state representative next year. We've got some local elections coming up, so this is actually much further up than that, and I just wanted to introduce myself. So it's been, I previously served you in the State House in 2009, 2000, and I'm running again for the 101st district, which includes Manistee as well as Benzie, Leona, and Mason Counties. And I just wanted to, I guess, first compliment you on a well-run meeting, and informally, but also to make myself available and accessible, that I want to learn from you, I want to learn what the local issues are, so that I can be a true representative and a bridge between local community and the state government, and the people who represent locally, and then the people who represent those same people at the state level. So this is just a way of saying hello and introducing myself, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment? Do you know, we'll move on to officials.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Internment fee manager?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
DPW?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance director?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City engineer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Cody?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Fonsky?
Absolutely. I just want to, if you didn't attend the open house at Fire Hall and EMS, they had on Saturday, great, great, a dead great job. It was a good time, a good time had by all. I appreciate what they did.
Are you voting Smith?
Yes, the 24th of October, this coming Saturday, is the Veterans Dinner hosted. Catholic War Veterans, American Legion, held at the Elks. Would encourage veterans to attend. I know there's still some, some spots for people that haven't signed up yet. I'd also like to thank Michelle for all the work that they've done getting ready for the election, and wish you well for a busy election day. Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Fonsky?
Nothing, Your Honor.
And so I remind people that the DA is putting on the Booze Booze Brats. They have a lot of activities going on downtown, so check it out. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Let's thank council for their input on the boards and commissions. I really like to hear everyone's point of view on that, and I want to thank Mayor Potem Smith for stepping up and seeing some of these boards and commissions that bodies and help on. And I also want to thank council for their commitment and time that we're putting in and fighting against the community, and a lot of time and a lot of effort.